So you'll notice things look a little bit different up here tonight. Selectmen, Mike Payne is going to be joining us momentarily. And Sean Askin and Cheryl Cook have previous commitments tonight. So we are going to begin as we always do with public audience. Who would like to begin? Yes, please. I should have mentioned that we do have a time limit. Per Board of Selectment rules of five minutes, but I always welcome people to come to my office hours or send me an email if you need additional time to discuss anything.
Okay, dear board members, good evening. My name is Maria Ecki and I've been a Simsbury resident for 40 years. My residence is 8 Glenrook Road, West Simsbury, Connecticut. I've watched the town grow substantially, some good progress, some bad. Some of you on the board are familiar with me and already know that I don't agree with most of your political agendas. Before I get into my questions, I think the problem with most town politicians in all of Connecticut towns, not just Simsbury, is that they make decisions from their own personal view of their own life. The one word that we all need to acquire and follow is empathy. And here's the meaning of it from Webster's, "The lack of true understanding of thoughts, feelings, or desires." In other words, people who only care and do what they personally think that everybody wants, that everybody else wants, is what they want. Now, I have some questions that I want to ask the public, and I expect a reply to my questions to be emailed to me at a later date, so I may share it with my constituents. I will leave these written questions with my email after this meeting with the town manager. Here's my questions. Does the new community social worker have a MSW as their salary level indicates? I heard that her job was created because of the opioid crisis. How many people have died in town from the disease in the years ranging 2014 to the present to justify a new position? How prevalent is opioid addiction in the town? Who first mentioned to hire a new physician? And what is that person's political affiliation, Republican or Democrat? Who are the board members? Political affiliations, names, political affiliations, phone numbers, and email addresses? Does Eric Wellman, first selectman, still make $10,000? What exactly are his hours per week? Is Governor Lamont going to throw off our town spending when he comes up with his ideas that the town should be responsible for each other town's deficits and/or the state's deficits? And that's it. Thank you so much, and I hope you answer them. Here you go.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming tonight. Who'd like to speak next? Joan?
At the February 11, 2019 Board of Selectment meeting, there was an agenda item, Simsbury Selectment E., Simsbury Performing Arts, SMA PC, Operating Agreement Amendment, request asking the board to reduce the police overtime expenditures duty for concerts, causing the PAC to lose the ability to promote its concerts, leading to a loss in revenue. Both Rob Hensley and Linda Schofield testified before the board that the PAC had lost money last year, and reducing fees for police overtime would increase their ability to contract with concert promoters. The premise Hensley used to promote a reduction in police overtime fees to what appeared to be a fictitious argument of a three-year contract of some unknown promoter, a town enhancement, and a loss in profitability last year was brought into the Board of Selectment with the Board of Selectment approval. How could a few thousand dollars be a deal breaker? The minutes of the February 11, 2019 meeting of the Police Commission state Commissioner Long put in a request to the Board of Selectment to table the private duty rate change proposals for the Simsbury Performing Arts Center at tonight's meeting. The Commission would like to review the details. Why did the Board of Selectment deny Mike Long's request? Using police overtime as a contract breaker is a ridiculous argument, since the overtime amount fluctuates with the salaries of the police at the concerts and costs increases with additional projected attendance. The PAC cannot determine the projected cost of a concert to promote it three years in advance, not even a week in advance. Large-for-profit concerts have their own security at concerts, in addition to the Simsbury Police. Why don't they take a hit? As President of the PAC, the owner of RH&amp;A, a wealth management company, why can't Hensley find some clients to underwrite the costs of the concerts instead of the Simsbury taxpayers? Linda Schofield, as a member of the Board of Selectment, has continually tried to enhance revenues for the town. However, in her capacity as a member of the Board of Directors of the PAC, she appeared to be in conflict with her values. It appears to me that after lengthy arguments, the Board of Selectment against giving the reduced police overtime rate and then voting for the reduction was purely political in nature and not in the best interest of the residents they represent. Recently, there was a full-page ad in the Hartford Current telling people to switch from smoking cigarettes to using Juul. With the epidemic of vaping amongst students and the serious consequences of vaping, a vaping Juul, which is equivalent to smoking one to two packs of cigarettes, the Hartford Current should have denied publishing the ad. As cigarette smoking is committed, the cigarette company, ATRA, has invested in Juul Company to continue to deliver nicotine to unsuspecting users and increasing their bottom line. According to an article in Time Magazine, tobacco giant Atria made a $12.8 billion investment in Juul. With a $12-point-billion investment, Atria, the nation's leading tobacco company, now owns 35% of Juul Labs, makers of the most popular e-cigarette. Atria Group has been renamed from Philip Morris, one of the world's largest producers and marketers of tobacco, cigarettes, Marlboro, and related products. I am concerned that the Hartford Current allowed the full-page ad from Juul.com to be published now, that everyone is -- I'm concerned that they did this, published now, that everyone is concerned about the e-cigarette epidemic. The advertisement appears to tell people that if you quit smoking cigarettes and switch to Juul and e-cigarette, you can quit smoking cigarettes. Atria Group makes money whether you switch to Juul or smoke cigarettes. Both have nicotine substances and are extremely addictive. The health risks associated with this project could be life-threatening. On Saturday, February 23rd, Simsbury Deep Dispatch had to call four ambulance services before AMR could respond to the call. Volunteer ambulance services are not reliable. The town should review contracting with AMR with paid professional staff on duty 24/7. Recently, we heard testimony that gifts of love had increased financial challenges of the town on the Eno Trust. I would like to propose having a social service substation to deliver wellness activities to the residents of the apartments of the Eno Trust. Virginia Connolly has 40 units, Owen Murphy has 70 units, and Eno Farms Affordable Housing has 50 units with several family members and apartments. The residents of these developments are in need of social services in close proximity to their apartments. A wellness center at the community farm would be consistent with the Eno Trust and the poor of Simsbury. The town recycling centers on the land as part of the Eno Trust included in Payne's contract, there should be a donation to social services from the revenues collected at the recycling centers. All of my comments can be posted on Simsbury Pat, Twitter at Joan Koch, and news feed on Facebook. And this is the ad that was in the Hartford Current. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Who'd like to speak next? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ken Warner. I've lived on 7 Glenrook Drive for the last 34 years. I didn't bring a speech, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. For 34 years, I've watched people run down West Mountain Road in their cars at excessive speeds. I have seen accidents. I've bumped into a police officer on the side of the road wearing radar and thanked him over and over and over again. I've got two grandchildren who use that road on regular races. It doesn't seem to slow them down. In fact, for 34 years, I even blink my lights at people, making them think there's a police officer in front or behind me, as a joke, but to have them slow down. But they don't. It's like a raceway between there and all the way to campus. I don't know why it hasn't been done before, but I propose that you put a stop sign both ways on West Mountain Road at the end of the road. For a variety of reasons. One, it would slow people down. Two, I wouldn't want to be a school bus driver trying to get out of that road with a busload of kids and have to deal with those people speeding by, because they're not going by at 35 miles an hour, they're going by from 25 miles an hour. So I would respectfully request that someone look into this. Can't cost a lot for two stop signs. It costs a lot more to have an officer on the side of the road with his car pulling over people to give them tickets. Second thing I want to bring up is, and I've brought this before with the town selectmen before, I live, again, at 7 Glenrook Drive. At the corner of my property on town land is a very large pine tree, which drops limbs at a regular basis. I brought it up to the last selectmen that this is a hazard for children walking on that road. It's a hazard for people driving on that road. I was told there's nothing wrong with the tree, and that's why they're leaving it, but I continue to look up the tree and find all these broken off limbs. So it's my opinion that it's not a safe thing to say nothing of pulling down power lines and costing the fortune that way. I would propose that someone come to 7 Glenrook and take a look at that tree and hopefully take it down. It's a huge, monstrous tree, and it's caused a lot of damage, you know, like right now I've got to go clean it up because there's limbs all over the street where it fell today. Last time I was here, I was here with the Boy Scout Troop 76, and we were doing public speaking, so it's been a while. But if you would please consider these two things, especially, I mean, I'd love to have the tree taken down just for the safety of the kids, but especially that stop sign. Anything we can do to slow that traffic on Lostbrook Road, I mean, excuse me, on West Mountain Road would be encouraged. They have a stop sign up by the farms, they have a stop sign at the four-way down farther, but they fly through that area. I'm sure that your police officers could tell you how fast they're going when they get tickets. All right? That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you'd like, you can send me an email, and then I can make sure to be able to give you an update on those issues.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question?
No, I'm sorry. That's, you can reach out to me later, and I'd be glad to take any question you have. We will get you answers on those questions that you posed earlier.
Oh, not just those. I was wondering where Mr. Askin was.
Excuse me. He's not here tonight. Let's move on to the town manager's budget presentation.
Just on interest?
Yeah, no, a little less.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started on the formal presentation, I'd like to offer some thanks to some members of my team that is in the studio of budget development. I'd like to thank Mary Leather and Melissa Appleby, our guidance director and deputy commander, for their dedicated and outstanding work in assisting with budget development, and the leadership team. I am so grateful to all of you for the time and effort and energy put into preparing this budget. We worked really hard to try and advance a number of selectmen goals and initiatives, but also to incorporate a number of GFOA recommended best practices into our budgeting process. So we required a lot of new information and a high-level analysis, and I'm just deeply grateful to all of you for the effort and time and energy that you put into helping develop this budget, so thank you. So while developing this budget, I had a number of main budget objectives. One item was to maintain our current services and programs. Secondly, it was to advance Board of Selectment initiatives and priorities, largely focusing on the priorities that were developed from your goal-setting sessions this fall. The primary areas of focus were around economic development, financial management, our infrastructure, and recreation. Another goal I had was to maintain and invest in our existing assets and infrastructure, with an emphasis on focusing on our cash to capital for those ongoing and routine capital needs that we have. And something new this year, I'll talk about this more as the presentation goes further, but developing a six-year plan for smaller dollar-value capital needs. These are our capital needs that are typically under $250,000 in value. Another priority for me was to improve our revenue projections and our accounting of revenues. This was an area that I felt needed some improvement, and again, really want to thank staff for working with me on that matter. A fifth goal was to continue to strengthen our long-term financial stability, so looking to maintain or increase our fund balance, maintaining our commitment to funding our OPEV and our pension liabilities, and also increasing our health insurance fund reserve. Lastly, we had a focus on changing coding to some of our light items, primarily to increase transparency and consistency in our reporting methods. Some examples that I'll go over this evening in further detail at our budget workshop on Saturday, but we consolidated the Parks and Recreation Fund, so it's Parks and Recreation Fund consolidation. This year, we have budgeted our dispatch program separately from the patrol function, again, to increase transparency for providing that particular service. Our shared services with the Board of Education, our dial-to-read program, and various services and contributions we're providing to the Housing Authority. So this is an overview of our general fund, town, Board of Ed, debt service, all of our general fund categories combined. We've also included the governor's proposed teachers' retirement system assessment, and we'll go over that further in the presentation. This is a highlight of some of our other significant funds in our budget that are not general fund budgets. Briefly, want to spend a few moments talking about our general fund revenue. So our property taxes, that's our anticipated property tax collection, is about 91% of our budget, so that is the largest revenue that we're collecting in this budget. That consists of real estate, motor vehicle taxes, as well as personal property taxes. The intergovernmental revenue is primarily state revenues, the largest of that number being our ECS number that we receive from the state, followed by other local revenues, things such as fees, permit fees, and things of that nature. So our grant list revenue outlook, we had very modest nominal growth on the grant list this year of about 0.85%. Our overall grant list value increased by about $20 million. Most of that is primarily due to the various apartment construction that is going on in town at the moment. Our largest increase on a percentage basis came from personal property that increased by about 2.52%. I would like to note that these numbers are based on the most recent information available, but they are subject to change pending the outcome of assessment appeals. For a budgeting assumption in terms of the mill rate, the state cap of 45 mills on the motor vehicle tax does remain in place, so for budgeting purposes, we have assumed a uniform mill rate across the board for real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property. And while the governor's proposed budget was released late last week, we did have an opportunity to incorporate the governor's proposed budget for state revenues. Most of our state revenues under his proposal do remain flat. There were a few decreases. One particular category, I think we decreased by $12, so some nominal decreases. The ECS number that we are looking at under the governor's proposed budget is an increase of about 1.4% or $86,000. So our general fund expenditures, you'll see that education is about a little over 70% of our overall expenditures. The superintendent will be presenting his budget to the Board of Education tomorrow evening. That was scheduled to occur a few weeks ago, but unfortunately, due to a snowstorm, the Board of Ed had to cancel their meeting, so they're actually receiving their budget just a touch later than they ordinarily would. Some of the next most significant on the municipal side expenditure categories for us are debt service, public safety, public works, as well as our benefits and insurances for employees. So this is a snapshot at the overall proposed budget compared to current year, and the overall number that we would be looking at is a 4.25% increase. Again, we have included the teachers' retirement system assessment. I'd like to point out debt service on this particular slide, as I'll be going through this in capital in greater detail later this evening, but debt service is our most significant budget driver in this budget. We're looking at an $860,000 increase, or about a 21% increase in our debt service payments. The capital and CNR contribution, while it appears to be a 16.8% increase, that's largely due to operating budget transfers, so our actual contribution in aggregate to capital and CNR, that's the cash contributions, is not changing. It's simply a different accounting method that we'll also be going over later this evening. So I'd like to review for you some of the key expenditure trends outside of debt service. So the true increase to the town government budget is 3.4% at this point, a little under $700,000. In order to reach the Board of Finance's 2.72% expenditure increase target, we would have to decrease this budget by about $140,000. In order to do so, I do believe that service reductions or a deviation from some of our existing financial policies and practices would be needed. In the back of conversation that you'd like to have during the budget workshop, I would certainly appreciate your policy guidance on that. So because of that 3.4% increase, we have not included any service improvements in this budget at this point. Some of the key drivers on salaries, I will be negotiating five successor collective bargaining agreements this spring and summer. That's five of our six collective bargaining groups have contracts that are coming due on June 30th. We do anticipate, based on what we're seeing, that there will be some sort of negotiated general wage settlement, so we have budgeted funds in contingency in the event that we reach settlements with our various unions. Another major driver for us were our staff increases for police officers. That's separate from a general wage increase. That is something we're contractually obligated to under the collective bargaining agreement, and that's about a $126,000 increase. We are also anticipating a medical leave and dispatch in the upcoming fiscal year. That is a particular position that we do need to backfill for. You know, certain administrative positions, if you have a medical leave, you can sometimes get by for a period of time without a person. Dispatch is not that type of a position. So anticipate a medical leave coverage in that unit. There's an extra cost in the upcoming budget of about $20,000. Another issue we had to tackle within the budget are the MS4 stormwater requirements. So I know we've talked about this in the past with you all. This is unfortunately an unfunded state mandate, so again, something we don't have any control over. These particular expenses totaling about $27,000 are reflected within the public works budget. Our health district assessment is also increasing by about $16,000. If you'll recall from some correspondence in your packet a few weeks back, the health district recently underwent a strategic planning process, in part due to a series of unfunded state mandates in terms of services that health districts are now expected to provide, and our current health district was unable to meet all of the service requirements without a change in their strategic direction. So this increase is part of the health district's multi-year plan to change the schedule of services that they're providing in order to meet the statutory requirements. During the budgeting process, we also uncovered a number of items that I would characterize as under-budgeted items. I will say that this is probably what happens when you have two former budget analysts and a former auditor really digging into all of the accounts. You get a little nerdy about this, and unfortunately, we did uncover a number of items that we have, just a little bit, just a little nerdy that we get on this. And we did uncover a number of items that have been under-budgeted. One of those items is our social security and Medicare. Those are those payroll taxes that we're required to contribute. Our projection is that for going into 1920, this will be about a $105,000 increase. We were under-budgeted for current year. Fortunately, with some transitions and salary savings, we do think we'll come in under-budget, but based on our existing payroll, again, this is an account that's been under-budgeted. We also discovered that we've been under-budgeting our liability and workers' compensation insurance premiums. That's about just under an $18,000 increase. Police overtime. So I know that this was an issue we talked about last year during the budget process that I believed we were probably under-budgeting this account about $75,000 a year, when we're looking at historical, you know, average spends in this particular account. That's a large number. Last year, we tried to sort of tackle that all in one chunk, and we were unable to do so. So what I'm proposing is that we try to tackle this over a three-year period, do this gradually, and increase that account by $25,000 a year over a three-year period, so we can more realistically budget the true cost of that particular account. Health insurance. This is our second most significant budget driver in the budget. We are looking at a $330,000 increase for health insurance. On the town side of the budget, across all funds, it's about a 9.5% increase. So this is a much larger number than we had initially projected when we started reviewing the matter with Board of Finance in November. There are a number of factors that have contributed to this. Obviously, I have several amount of time really getting to the bottom of this. One of the reasons is that our premiums have been set too low. I'll refer to them as premiums, even though we are self-insured. That's probably the easiest way for people to sort of understand, but it's our rates. It's the rates that we as employers and that our employees are paying into the health insurance fund. Another significant issue is we have seen some significant increases in our stop-loss premium. This year, we were looking at a 15% increase in our stop-loss premium. So stop-loss right now, we do not carry aggregate stop-loss for our health insurance fund. We do carry out individual claims in excess of $275,000. That's inclusive of both medical and prescription claims. We have had incredibly good, positive experience on our stop-loss, so to see these increases is somewhat disappointing. We are in the process of beginning to put things in place to be able to market our stop-loss insurance as a cost-saving measure, hopefully, to get a better handle on, again, that particular cost. I do think because of our positive claims experience, that there's a good opportunity there for us to save some funds. Another piece that I want to bring to your attention is that our health insurance fund reserve is not at recommended levels. So truly best practice in our municipal world for a self-insured plan, we want to be at a minimum of 12 weeks of expected claims, up to about 24 weeks of expected claims. That's sort of the range that we would like to be at. Being at 12 weeks of expected claims is the equivalent of being fully insured, but when we're self-insured, you know that those unexpected, large claims can add to that, and so to have more than that is wonderful. Anything, again, in excess of six months is really too much. And I've got, yeah, Chris.
Is that benchmarking, though, off of like demographics? I'm sure you're doing that off of like demographics, not just a general municipal recommendation.
Sure. So again, all of the employee benefits consultants I have ever worked with, sort of, again, in our municipal setting and a similar-sized community, have recommended this, and our current employee benefits consultants are also recommending this. That was something we did recently. Over the summer and fall, we engaged in an RFP process for an employee benefits consultant. That was something that had not been done, I believe, in over three decades, and we did select a new vendor, and we've been working very closely with that new vendor to really dig into this, to establish appropriate premiums, to get a good handle on where our reserve is at and where our reserve needs to be. So our current reserve is at the equivalent of about eight and a half weeks of expected claims, and our target reserve is really around a minimum of 3.6 million of expected claims. So this increase is definitely not going to get us to the 3.6 million all at once, but it's a start. It's a small, sort of gradual start, and there may be some opportunities for helping to shore that up that I'll be addressing later this evening. So another expenditure trend, and this really grew out of some of your conversations around financial management and transparency and but it's a start. It's a small, sort of gradual start, and there may be some opportunities for helping to shore that up that I'll be addressing later this evening. So another expenditure trend, and this really grew out of some of your conversations around financial management and transparency, and showing the true cost of services and the true costs of, or excuse me, the true sources of revenue coming in to fund services and capital projects. So we have a number of shared services with the Board of Education. I'm not sure if folks are aware of that, but we share services with the Board of Education in the areas of IT, school resource officers, grounds maintenance for our schools, and engineering services. We were not showing the full cost of those services, nor were we, through our budgeting process, showing the offsetting revenues of those services. So what we have done in this budget is demonstrated the true cost of the services, along as demonstrating the incoming offsetting revenues that we have. So there is no net impact to the budget. This is simply, again, for transparency, showing that we're sharing these services, showing the true cost, and then showing the incoming revenues. We had a handful of other services where we were in a similar situation. One was our dial-a-ride program. The true cost of providing that service for the upcoming year is about $166,000. It's showing an increase of about $42,000. We are very fortunate, and we do receive a grant from the state of Connecticut that assists with that dial-a-ride program. That's transportation for our elderly seniors. We were not showing that grant revenue through the budgeting process. We were not showing the associated expenses. So this budget now demonstrates those revenues as well as those expenses. We had a few other situations similar in nature with the Housing Authority, as well as our contribution to the VNA, which is the Visiting Nurses Association. So again, in an effort to be more transparent, we are now documenting those costs and revenues. As you may have noticed in your packet, the Board of Finance did adopt the new capital and capital nonrecurring budgeting policy. With that policy, there were two items. We have moved out of the operating budget and moved into either the capital budget or capital nonrecurring budget. So you'll see that $180,000 has been moved from the Public Works operating budget to the CNR budget, and that's for the large truck plow purchase that we do on an annual basis. We've also moved $180,000 from the Public Works operating budget to the capital budget for paving purposes. Again, a very new development in the expenditure trend was the Teachers Retirement System Assessment. Under the Governor's proposed budget, we would have to make a required contribution of about $304,000. However, the net impact of that, based on our state revenue projections, would be about $244,000 to our town budget. An item that I suspect will generate a lot of discussion during our budget workshop is the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. As you know, this fund has finished in a deficit position six out of eight years since cost shifts were implemented in 2011. Currently, our projections for the current fiscal year are also showing us to finish in a deficit position, which would be seven out of nine years since the cost shifts were implemented. We are working through our analysis. We do not have the full report ready, but we have identified a number of community use expenses that are being paid for by program fees right now. So these are the fees that our participants in programs such as summer camp, various special events, things of that nature. These are their program fees are paying for expenses, again, that we would characterize as community use. So expenses that are supporting the department as a whole. Some of that is staff and administrative costs. For example, the director's salary and the administrative assistant's salary are largely being paid for by program fees, not by the general fund. We've also discovered that many of our building and facilities maintenance costs are also being paid for by program fees. So for example, in our buildings, right, Eno, the library, Town Hall, we pay for cleaning supplies through the general fund. We pay for repairs if something breaks in the building through the general fund. We pay for supplies for our restrooms through the general fund. Currently, as structured, program users are paying for all of those expenses to our building at the Simsbury Farms complex. So for example, cleaning supplies, supplies for the restrooms. We had the elevator break at Simsbury Farms. Program users are paying for those expenses, not the general fund. Again, those are expenses that we would characterize as community use. And again, we'll hope for some good, healthy policy discussion around whether or not, you know, the Board would want to support and increase general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund. I do believe that in order for the fund to remain in a positive position, we will have to take some number of actions. Again, whether that's an increased general fund contribution, whether it's reduction in services and staffing, or both, I do believe we will have to take some combination of those measures in order to have a balanced Parks and Recreation budget moving forward. This budget also reflects a new concept. We have presented a consolidated department budget within the Special Revenue Fund, the intent being to improve transparency and budgetary monitoring and tracking. This way, we can truly track and look at the expenditures for the department as a whole, as well as revenues for the department as a whole, in one location. So moving on to some of the Board of Selectment initiatives that we worked hard to try and incorporate into this budget. One is economic development. We have maintained existing contributions to Main Street Partnership, to the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. We have maintained the funding for the Business Resource Librarian. I think that is a terrific, terrific service we provide. A lot of people don't know we have this position. This is a master's-level librarian who is specifically working with the business community, entrepreneurs, and job seekers, and helping to connect them to resources to help them be successful in their endeavors. There is also a small amount of fund budgeted in the CNR Fund for wayfinding signage for downtown, which, again, was something that came out of your goal-setting conversations this fall. Another area of focus was financial management. You'll see in the capital budget that there is a capital project to implement a comprehensive financial management software system. This is $350,000, again, budgeted in capital. This is a joint initiative with the Board of Education. We are working closely with them on this project. The $350,000, there is not a separate contribution in the Board of Ed's capital budget. This is it. It will take a look at our general ledger. It's going to address our purchasing needs. It's going to provide a budgeting module, and most importantly, it's going to provide payroll and human resources information system to us. Largely, what we are doing for payroll and human resources information system is very dated. It's manual, and it's paper-based. So the ability to have a comprehensive, modern system that has the power to do all of this will be life-changing for our organization, and it's a project I'm really excited about it, and I'm grateful to the Board of Ed for being open to the concept and to be an active, you know, participant with us as we work through this process. We've been currently having demos for various systems and are working on identifying a preferred vendor in the event that we have funding for this initiative. I believe that the operating budget improves transparency in our financial reporting, which was another priority established under financial management. And I'm particularly proud of the fact that our capital budgeting improves our capital planning and tracking methods. As I mentioned earlier, we have now budgeted for six years in the CNR Fund our smaller dollar value capital needs. We were only looking at our smaller capital needs in one-year quick shots. What's that year coming up? What is, what do we need in the upcoming year? But we weren't really looking at those out-years, and so what was happening is we had a large number of smaller capital items that were really mounting and piling up. And so you'll see in your budget book, we have really started to build a very comprehensive plan for those smaller capital needs that we have. This budget book also demonstrates all sources of revenue, including grant revenues, for our capital projects and our CNR projects. So again, this is new. Previously, CNR projects that were being funded through sources other than bonds or sources other than cash were not being reflected in our capital budgeting process. This budget document now, again, shows those projects as well as the incoming revenues. So examples would be town aid road, if we're making a purchase out of the private duty fund for police. Those types of projects are now being accounted for in a transparent manner. So capital budgeting revenues, moving on to the capital budget, you'll see the planned sources of revenue. And again, besides bonds and general fund, you'll now see grants, sewer use monies, town aid road, and LOCP funds being reflected as revenue sources for our capital budget. And this particular capital budget snapshot does include education projects, which, again, the superintendent will be addressing tomorrow evening. So for capital fund revenues, again, our cash for capital and our CNR contribution in aggregate remains level funded for 1920. Our proposal does not utilize bonding for town capital projects, which are routine in nature this year. This would be the second consecutive year that bond funds are not being used for town capital projects, which, when we start to talk about debt service and our capital budgeting model, I think you'll understand the value in that particular statement. And again, this includes that $180,000 operating budget transfer from the highway budget for our Public Works paving needs. So the planned capital budget expenditures are as follows. In addition to the education projects for Public Works, it's pavement of our roads and our sidewalk resurfacing. You'll recall that just recently, we had the presentation on sidewalk resurfacing and improving our ramps, so this would be an allocation, again, as part of that multi-year plan to fully rehab our sidewalks and our ramps. For general government, it's the financial management software system I spoke to earlier. And there's also a very small contribution to the capital reserve. This capital reserve is a new account. It's something that I believe is very important for us to have, and it's something that is now part of our new capital budgeting policy. So the capital reserve will help us when we have emergency situations arise for our buildings in particular, that we may not have been able to reasonably anticipate or plan for. So it's a starting point, but again, it's making an initial investment into the capital reserve. And lastly, for our greenway improvements, so those are our bike, oftentimes what people think of as our bike trails, about $165,000 to be used towards resurfacing, fence repairs, and needed tree work. I would like to briefly touch on a few capital projects that we currently have on the books that were funded in previous years and which we do not have sufficient funding for. Two of the projects I'm going to touch on first, we're planning to bring to your board and the Board of Finance later this spring with a plan to address through the current year budget. So as we mentioned at the presentation last, at the last meeting regarding the One Old Bridge Road Park project, we are about $150,000 short. The previous capital appropriations will not cover the cost of the adopted concept plans. We're hoping to address this with current year unanticipated revenue that we received, as well as a small balance from the acquisition appropriation. We are still seeking the FEMA grant funds for demo, but again, we'll bring a plan to you this spring. Another project this spring we'll bring to you is the Public Works Garage renovations. This is another project that was done in a past capital appropriation, but unfortunately, it's about $250,000 short. We also, we're working to plan to address this with current year anticipated operating budget savings and a reallocation of salt expenses to town aid road. In doing so, we're working on a plan that we would be able to fund this gap, again, with operating budget savings, and we'll be bringing that to you this spring as well. Additionally, we have two other projects that were funded a number of years ago that are also lacking sufficient funding. One is the parking lot safety improvements and realignment at Town Hall, and the second is the tariff fill to downtown bike path connector. Due to capacity and funding constraints, those particular projects were reflecting in out-years of the CIP. Moving on to our CNR Fund and budgeted revenues, again, you'll see here that in addition to the cash, we are now showing the revenue sources of town aid road, the sewer use fund, our private duty fund, and the Eno trust. The Eno trust, we do have the ability to use funds from that trust to pay for the care and maintenance of Eno. There is a project in here. Our clock tower at Eno does need some repairs, so there's a plan to use funds from the trust over a two-year period to make those repairs to the clock tower. So for our CNR Fund revenues, this particular budget utilizes the five-year payback method that folks have generally been comfortable with here. That is a general fund cash contribution. This also includes a $270,000 cash for capital transfer from the general fund. This includes a $180,000 operating budget transfer from highway for the Public Works truck, and again, those are pursuant to our new capital budgeting policy. And next, you'll see what we have for planned budget expenditures. So for Public Works, we have a number of projects that are largely replacement in nature. We also have funds allocated for continued ashbore or tree mitigation. I'm sure you recall that conversation from last budget year, as well as the wayfinding signage for downtown that I mentioned earlier. And again, these projects are funded through a number of sources, ranging from town aid road to cash to the Eno trust. For culture parks and recreation, I would absolutely just like to take a quick moment to pause and to commend Tom Tiberzki and our Parks Superintendent Orlando Cassiano for their work in this area, because we have a tremendous amount of need in culture parks and recreation for those basic infrastructure needs. Items we need to keep the ice rink going, items we need to keep the pool going, items we need to keep the golf course going, our playscapes. Most of our playscapes are at the end of their useful life, and they're quite expensive to repair and to replace. So there's a tremendous, a tremendous need here. They have done an amazing job of mapping out over the next six years what the most immediate and critical needs are. So one of those items is the ice rink condenser unit. If this item goes down, we go down for the season. And if I recall, this particular item is already, it's been with us for about 20 years, and it was refurbished when we purchased it. So it's definitely on its last leg. We need to paint the underroof at the ice rink, pickup truck replacement. Our Simsbury Farms pool security fencing is original to the construction of the pools. It needs work. It needs to be replaced. Our insurance carrier, KIRMA, has been out to do a risk assessment for us. This is an item that is a, it's a safety issue for us, and we absolutely need to replace it. Speaking to the playscapes, as I mentioned, playscapes are quite expensive to replace. And so what you'll see when you have a chance to look at your budget book with this new year, I mean, excuse me, with this new budgeting method of looking at expenses over a six-year period, is you'll see, setting aside a little bit of money every year for the playscapes. So what we're recommending is $25,000, $25,000, $25,000. We should, over about a six-to-seven-year period, be able to make a very good dent in replacing all of our smaller-scale playscapes. So this isn't Rotary Park. This isn't the large playscape up at the farms. These are all of our other smaller playscapes that we have throughout town. And then also, our paddle ports are in very much need of resurfacing and painting, and while it's a small expenditure, $12,000, it's a very important one. CNR projects for police, you'll see the three replacement patrol cruisers. You may recall that they have about an average life expectancy of three years, so we typically will replace it about three a year. We have a number of security camera and interview room audio/video upgrades that we need to make. Those purchases would come out of the private duty fund, excuse me, the revenues would come out of the private duty fund. And as we've been discussing, the radio system feasibility study phase two, we do need to complete that this year if we plan to advance that project forward in fiscal 2021. Under general government, we've allocated a portion to the 2020 revaluation. Our telephone system at Town Hall, Eno, Public Works, and the Sewer Authority has outlived its useful life and needs replacement. So this would be a replacement telephone system at $40,000, and we've allocated a small amount of money to our deep-water wind expenses. The sewer fund would be providing funding for the sanitary sewer lining of about $100,000. And lastly, in the CNR Fund, the automated book handler at the library has also outlived its useful life by many years. We've been experiencing frequent breakdowns. It's time to replace that item, so that is a cost of about $73,000. I'd like to spend a little bit of time with you talking about our current capital and debt service budgeting model. Again, as we've had an opportunity to really start to dig into the budgeting model, understand what was being inputted into the model, we've identified some challenges that we're concerned about and want to bring to your attention, we'll also bring this to the Board of Finance's attention. One of the issues that we discovered is that the debt service and capital budgeting model, it was not including our smaller-value capital needs, and many of our routine, or what I might characterize as baseline capital needs. So a lot of those items that are, say, $250,000 or less, were not being reflected whatsoever in that capital and debt service budgeting model. And again, by not also planning for those on a six-year basis, a lot of those smaller needs have begun to mount. Another challenge that we've discovered is that the model was including cash for capital and debt service in combination. And essentially, what's happened, and we have a chart that's going to illustrate this for you, is that model has starved our cash for capital in out-years, meaning that if we continue to. continue to use that model as it exists, there is absolutely no cash available for our basic and routine capital needs. So what would happen in that circumstance? Well, as little to no cash to capital is available, we're going to have to begin to frequently bond for our smaller value and capital, capital needs. And those really shouldn't be bonded for. It's going to create a cycle of bonding for all of our capital needs and not being able to pay for our baseline capital needs in cash. This ultimately is going to create more expense to the town in the long run. Another challenge we uncovered with the current capital debt service budget model is that the town has been bonding for cash flow as opposed to bonding project expenses as they've been approved. So this impacts the projections because we need more funds allocated for debt service than what was previously appearing in the model. We have accounted for this in the chart that you're about to see, but when you take this into account, again, you're going to see that debt service is now exceeding that sort of 6.7% target line that the Board of Finance likes to see. So again, here is a chart I think that a lot of you are familiar with. The blue line is that 6.7% target line that the Board of Finance likes to see. If you look in the out-years, the green and white lines, in theory, are cash for capital. Now, you can look and see, as we start looking at a period, a six-year period coming up, there's absolutely no room for cash for capital. So what happens? It's unrealistic to think that over a six-year period, we're not going to have smaller capital needs. So now, we're bonding, right? We're bonding, and we weren't expecting to bond. So in those out-years, that cash for capital is going to dry up really fast. We're going to take on more and more debt service, and we're going to be further above that 6.7% target line. So again, the current model has some challenges. I think part of it is a philosophical shift of understanding that cash for capital and debt service are very distinctly separate items. We could certainly have targets. Perhaps it's that we want debt service to be 5% of our overall budget, or 4%, or 3%, or 6%. But thinking about debt service differently from cash for capital, because as you can see, the current model is presenting some significant challenges for us. Moving on to fund balance. The projected fund balance in fiscal 1920 would be a contribution of about $844,000. This is the difference between the budgeted tax collection rate of 98.5% and our anticipated tax collection rate of 99.5%. So what we do here as a community, what we've been doing, I believe, for some time, is again, we know based on our historical data that we can reasonably anticipate our tax collection rate to be 99.5%. However, for budgeting purposes, we've been using a collection rate of 98.5%. The difference between those rates is about $844,000, and that essentially would become our projected fund balance contribution. So based on that, at fiscal year-end for 1920, our projection is that fund balance would be at 15% of the general fund budget. It's much higher than most Connecticut municipalities. At fiscal year 1819 year-end, we're anticipating approximately, using this methodology, about an $811,000 contribution to fund balance, bringing us up to about 14.65% of budget. I will also just note that since the state's financial crisis has occurred, bond-raiding agencies are now recommending that fund balance be built up to about 15% to 17% of general fund expenditures. And this chart is just, I think, a great visual to show that we have been steadily over time increasing our fund balance. The 2019 year-end projection, the 13.81. So again, technically, with how we budget our collection rate, we do not technically budget a contribution to fund balance. So that 13.81 is a very percent, is a very literal look at, again, fund balance. Again, I think a more realistic look at fund balance based on the collection rate is that 14.65% number for year-end at current fiscal year. So what does all of this mean for the impact on our taxpayers? We took a look at the median-valued single-family home, and based on the current mill rate, which is 36.42 mills, to fund this budget, a mill rate of 37.57 mills would be needed. So the impact to a median-valued, single-family home would be an increase of about $246 a year, or a percentage change of 3.1%. This is just, I think, a great snapshot of where do the tax dollars go? So again, for somebody who has a median-valued home, they're making their property tax payments to us, this is a great snapshot of where their dollars are going. Again, education being the largest driver, again, debt service, and, and that is a particular budget driver for us, it is only going to increase, as you saw from this, the slide a few slides back. So in summary, I have a number of suggested topics for further discussion during our budget workshop time together. In addition to going over the departmental budgets, I'd like to spend some time, at the end of the day, going over about half a dozen items that I think are policy items, and again, consideration for the Board of Selectmen as, as policy items. One are the outside agency funding requests. We received a number of requests from our outside agencies for increases in our contributions to their agencies. My budget only reflects level funding of those agencies. Also included in the outside agency funding request is the 350th Committee. You know, what level does this board feel comfortable perhaps making a contribution to that, that wonderful community initiative, but again, a policy conversation. What we did as part of the budgeting process for this year is we completely revamped the process for outside agency funding requests. We now have a standardized application that agencies needed to submit to us. We made a public announcement about the outside agency funding requests to the public. It was on our homepage, and we directly communicated with the agencies that have been receiving contributions from us. As part of that, we requested, I think, some really solid information that will help guide your policy conversations. There's information about number of clients they're serving, cost per client served, other revenue sources they're receiving. We have included that information in your budget book under the Board of Selectmen budget. So again, I think that will help frame your conversation around outside agency funding requests. Service improvements. So as I mentioned, because of a lot of expenditures, including health insurance, that we just don't have a lot of control over at the moment, particularly with building back up the reserve, I didn't include any in the budget. But I did ask my department heads to spend some time analyzing their needs. And looking at those needs, there are about five or six that I think are most important in the long term, that as an organization, if we can find some funding over time for those needs, that, that would be valuable to the organization and valuable to the, to the community. I'd like to at least bring those items to your attention, so you have an awareness of what they are. We've done very detailed cost estimates in terms of what those service improvements would be. One is very small in dollar value. It's $2,000, and it's for our dog park. The dog park is our asset. That is something that was a wonderful community initiative. It was built by volunteers. It was funded by volunteers. But we never included funds in our operating budget to help support that asset on an ongoing basis. So right now, the volunteers, out of their own pockets, are trying their best to fundraise and keep that asset going. An analysis, again, that Tom and Orlando put together for us, in terms of just the basic supplies, it's pretty minimal. It's $2,000, but that is technically a service improvement, up to a few staffing positions that I would like to review with you on Budget Workshop Day. Another topic that I know we've talked about and at some length is the increased general fund contribution to parks and recreation, and whether or not that's something that this board supports, and if so, doing that gradually or at a more aggressive pace. The health insurance fund reserve is another topic of policy conversation. The pension and OPEB trust interest rate assumptions. Again, I know we talked about this at Tri-Board. The Retirement Plan Subcommittee has been talking about this to, to quite, to quite some length. Our interest rate assumptions for both are currently at 7%. I think over time, if we can bring that down to about 6.5%, that's a more reasonable rate for us to be using. Again, but, you know, how gradually, how aggressively do we try and attack that problem? And the last policy topic for consideration, which may be the most controversial, is do we want to consider the possible use of a portion or all of the planned fund balance contribution to fund some combination of the above expenditures so we're not further burdening our taxpayers with a mill rate increase? You know, what, what is that target general fund, fund balance percentage that you all are comfortable with and the Board of Finance is comfortable with? Is it 13%? Is it 14%? Is it 15%? If it's 15%, then I would say that there's absolutely no portion of that money that we could use towards some of these other topics. If you're more comfortable with a number closer to 13% or 14%, that does provide some room to talk about some of these other issues without necessarily increasing the mill rate. So again, those are some of the policy conversations I'm hoping we can have at the end of Budget Workshop Day on Saturday. Some suggested future areas of focus. We definitely plan to continue to monitor the state budget and intergovernmental revenue, as well as the teachers' retirement system assessment. I think it's important for us to continue to focus on cash to capital for our ongoing and routine capital needs. I think that we have a number of projects underway that will hopefully be adding new growth, not in the 1920 budget, but in 2021 and 2122. And really, again, being disciplined perhaps about using revenue generated from new growth to help us address our cash to capital needs. Again, looking at that debt service chart in the out-years, this is an area, long-term, I think that needs to be an area of focus for us. We will be completing the analysis regarding the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund and look forward to sharing our results with you. I do plan to complete marketing of stop-loss insurance to hopefully achieve some savings there that would have an operating budget impact for us. I'm also going to have some conversations with our collective bargaining groups around health insurance plan design changes related to prescription medications. Again, through the collective bargaining process, I think there are some areas there that could achieve some substantial savings for, for our plans and ultimately help improve the overall health of our fund. And lastly, I think it's important for us to continue making improvements to the budget document to reflect GFOA-recommended best practices. I think we made some really good strides in the budget document. I'm really proud of the work we did, but there's more room for improvement that we're looking forward to in, in future years. So highlights. This budget funds current services and programs. We're accounting for items that were previously underbudgeted. We're in this, excuse me, we're investing in existing infrastructure and assets, utilizing cash for capital for our routine needs. We're advancing Board of Selectmen initiatives, particularly in the areas of economic development, financial management, I think, infrastructure, and recreation. And we were also able to address the impact of the governor's proposed budget. Our budget workshop is scheduled for the Saturday. Board members are encouraged to flag items of interest to you for further discussion. Please ask questions. When possible, if you have some questions that are percolating between now and Saturday, please send them my way. Amy, Melissa, and I will do our best to try and get answers to you in advance of the workshop, just to help expedite responses, and, and again, to help you and us be as prepared as possible for Saturday. Here are some key budget dates in the process. Notably, I would like to just point out that the Board of Selectmen will be presenting to the Board of Finance on March 19th. Our public hearing is tentatively scheduled for April 2nd, and our anticipated referendum date is May 14th. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Maria, and thank you, Melissa and Amy, and all the department heads and all the staff who contributed to this. You shared with us tonight, I think, some, you know, some, some challenging things, some tough things, but one of the things I really appreciate is the, the commitment to accuracy and transparency and good government and some best practices that, that you're bringing. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any immediate questions that anybody wanted to ask ahead of Saturday?
Just a couple. Maria, where does the, where does the 3.4 gross out? What's the actual expenditure number?
Sure.
I might have missed it.
That's okay. That's a great question, and we have the detail in our supplemental information in your budget book. So we have a supplemental tab. It's tab 27. I thought we might get this question. If you go to the second page in your supplemental information tab, it will show you the various operating budget transfers that have an impact to get to that true, what I would call the true number of the 3.4% as well as some of those expenditures and revenues that we discussed that are netting out. Because again, there are corresponding revenues to offset the expenditure that we're now demonstrating. So that page will show you the items that get you to the 3.4%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So this document and the presentation we just saw will both be posted to the town website, and there'll be a link to it in my First Selectmen's Report, so people can look at that. And I also, you know, want to encourage anybody in this audience or watching on SCTV, please reach out to myself or any member of your Board of Selectmen if you have any thoughts or feedback or questions about anything that we've shared tonight. Thank you. Good. Let's move on to the First Selectmen's Report. I will have a budget update with all those links, but for the sake of time, I'm not going to repeat what we just heard. I'm going to begin with a quick update on black bears. I have heard from dozens of residents over the past year who are concerned about the prevalence of black bears in our community. And I've shared those concerns with both Senator Whitkos and Representative Hampton. And I wanted to share that there's two bills that will be the subject of public hearings on Friday, March 1st. So one bill would be authorizing a black bear hunting in, in Litchfield County only, and then there's a second bill that would be looking at non-lethal management of the black bear population. So residents are welcome to provide testimony, either in person or in writing. Written testimony can be submitted to envtestimony@cga.c t.gov, and that will be included, a link to that will be included in my report. I've spoken to the Chair of the Environment Committee, and I've also shared the data that our town has collected around the increase in calls for service about our bear population. So I thought this one would be of interest, and I'd share it. On the subject of snow removal, I wanted to give a shout-out to our Department of Public Works, which has the tough task of keeping our 170 miles of roads clear of snow and ice. Although winter is hopefully, maybe, winding down in a month or so, I did want to share a neat opportunity to see firsthand what it takes to clean up after a winter storm. Our snowplow ride-along program allows residents who are over the age of 18 to accompany one of our plow drivers while they're cleaning up from a storm. I've done it myself, and I highly recommend the experience. It is bumpier and hotter than you would expect. It's very, very hot in those cabs, so don't bundle. I also have been getting some questions this time of year about what residents can do if their mailbox is damaged by a snowplow. While it is relatively uncommon, the Board of Selectmen has adopted a policy that allows for the reimbursement of $25 for a post and $25 for a mailbox if the mailbox is physically struck by the plow. At our February 11th meeting, the Board of Selectmen adopted a resolution joining the Sustainable CT Program. It's an environmental certification program that towns can join free of charge. The part of the program that I'm most excited about is the structure that it'll provide our town and the creation of a roadmap of projects to make the town more environmentally friendly. On the deepwater wind solar project, development and management plans have been filed for the project with the Connecticut Siting Council. The DNM plan is essentially a detailed overview of how the 26.4 megawatt facility would be built. Staff evaluated the submission, and they'll be providing an update to the Board of Selectmen during our executive session. But I know this project has tremendous public interest, so there's going to be a, a presentation this spring, really as soon as we can, you know, we can appropriately do it so that the public is aware of, of what's going to be coming to our town. Lastly, the Community for Care is hosting a conversation on eating disorders Wednesday, March 13th. It's at 6:30 PM at the Simsbury Public Library. One of the panelists will be a local teenager and author of Changing Ways. That's a new book in which she shares her personal experience, so pretty neat opportunity. That's my update, and I'll turn now to Maria for the Town Manager Report.
Thank you.
I do have, in addition to the agenda for this evening, late last week, I received a request to have a resignation and an appointment to the Recycling Committee added to the agenda. So I'm respectfully, excuse me, respectfully requesting that resignation from an appointment to Recycling Committee be added to the agenda under Appointments and Resignations. This item can be added this evening with a two-thirds vote of the body. Supporting documentation was emailed to you on Friday, and hard copies were provided this evening. Regarding the Sustainability Team Agenda item, over the weekend, we received additional feedback from the Clean Energy Task Force. They are recommending that the Sustainability Team membership composition be expanded by one member to include a member of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission. I did just want to alert you to that suggestion, and it could be discussed further on your agenda this evening under the Sustainability Team item. For the fiscal 1920 budget, again, a reminder that your budget workshop is scheduled to be held this Saturday morning in this room, beginning at 8:30 AM. We'll have We'll have some light breakfast refreshments, but also plan to have some lunch available for folks. For further budget discussion and tentative budget adoption is scheduled for your March 11th Board of Selectmen meeting. I've been giving some thought to this. In the event that additional discussion is needed, I recommend that we find a backup date just to have in our calendars in the event that we need it, preferably March 13th. But I'm going to look at a number of dates, and we'll be sending some potential dates to you. Again, this would only be in the event that we're not able to tackle everything on March 11th. For departmental news and notes, under Culture, Parks, and Recreation, I'd like to say congratulations and goodbye and thank you to Stephen Gingras. He is retiring on February 28th after 34 years of service. I mean, that's just an amazing career with the town. A lot of folks may know him. He's a well-known fixture at Memorial Park. He has been skillfully preparing our baseball and softball fields there for a very, very long time. We'll miss him. We wish him all the best in his retirement. We'll be having a retirement reception for him this Thursday, the 28th, at 12:00 PM at the Parks Maintenance Garage for folks who may like to attend and wish him well. From our library, the Simsbury Public Library has launched Raising Readers. This is a new initiative from our Children's Department, again, launched at helping young readers. We have had a great participation rate so far. Simsbury families are demonstrating their interest in the exclusive themed book list, the librarian book reviews, app recommendations, and helpful tips for making reading a supported, encouraged, and enjoyable part of growing up in Simsbury. We have a link here at the Town Manager's Report for folks who may be interested in becoming part of this initiative. From our Police Department, we do want to alert folks that we had some purses, money, credit cards, and a laptop stolen from a number of vehicles during overnight hours last week. Some of the vehicles were left unlocked. Other vehicles were damaged in order to gain access to steal the items. So again, we do want to remind the public to please lock your vehicles. Please also do not leave valuables inside. If you do have information potentially about those thefts, we've provided a phone number where you can contact our detectives. And from the Town Manager's Office, Eversource has notified us that their contractor is conducting flyover of our transmission lines in town over the next few days, and those flights will be taking place between about 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, weather permitting. For special events, we have a passport event that will be held at the library this Saturday. The United States Postal Service will be at the library facilitating this event, and information regarding the event is available at the library's website. And lastly, we have a new program that the Department of Community and Social Services is offering in collaboration with the Resilience Grows Here Initiative. It will be a monthly coffee hour for our veterans. It's going to be held on the first Monday of every month at 10:00 AM at Ena Memorial Hall, the first one being held on April 1st. Resilience Grows is a community-based initiative of our Health District, and it's focused on the mental health of veterans and their families. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Before we move on to Selectmen action, is there a motion to add the Recycling Committee resignation and appointment to Item D under Appointments and Resignations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that motion carries. Item A, Tax Refund Request, is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $5,317.31 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So next, we have several public gathering permits, and one of the joyful things of preparing for these is just a reminder of the wonderful things we're going to get to look forward to over the next six months. So with that, Item B, the first one we're looking at is the Annual Flea and Smorgasbord. It's an event that includes vendors and food trucks at Simsbury Meadows. It's scheduled to take place April 26th and 27, and it will remain mostly the same as in years past. Are there any questions on this event? Okay, is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the 2019 Simsbury Flea and Smorgasbord as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item C is the Simsbury Women's Club's Arts and Crafts Festival, which is scheduled for September 14th and 15th, same place as previous years, in the parking lots along Iron Horse Boulevard. Any questions on this one? Okay. Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Simsbury Women's Club 50th Arts and Crafts Festival as presented and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item D is the Annual Valley Collector Car Club Charity Show, which is scheduled this year for the 21st of July. It'll remain the same as in years past. Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the 2019 Valley Collector Car Club Show as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And lastly, the 22nd Annual River Run is scheduled for the 28th of April. It's a 5K and 10K road race and will remain the same as in years past. Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to authorize the public gathering application for the 2019 River Run as presented and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item F is the proposed improvement to the band shell structure at the Performing Arts Center. So the Performing Arts Center is interested in winterizing the bathroom and the lower level of the band shell. They are proposing to pay for the improvements, which are estimated at around $2,000, and also requesting we waive the permit fees since the improvements are being made to a town facility. I wanted to see if there were any questions on this item.
The only question I had, I think, and understand why they want that, but in reading through their process there, they talk about having one person able to know how to winterize it. I've typically found you should have two people. People go away, people get sick. That would be my only suggestion, I think. Other than that, I think it's a very good thing that they've laid out to do.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? Okay, so there's several motions here. Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to accept the donation from the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center associated with the winterization improvements made to the existing restroom located in the band shell structure, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed memorandum of understanding regarding the band shell restroom, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign the permit and land use applications related to the band shell restroom improvements on behalf of the Town of Simsbury, and move to approve the fee waiver request for the permit application fees related to the band shell restroom improvements?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The other item I wanted to discuss was the Performing Arts Center's request that the town provide a financial contribution of $350 to the project. Were there any questions that members had about that component? Okay. Is there a motion to provide a town financial contribution to the project in the amount of $350?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item G is the Proposed Management Specialist Classification. At the last meeting of the Personnel Subcommittee, we reviewed and endorsed the creation of a management specialist position which would reside in the Town Manager's Office. Were there, I'll ask if there's any questions, but Maria, is there anything you wanted to add?
Just, again, that we reviewed this with the Personnel Committee. This is part of the planned restructuring for my office. Again, now that I've been here for just over a year, I've had an opportunity to really assess the needs of the organization as well as my office, and this restructuring would provide us with a higher level of support, particularly somebody that I would characterize having as a generalist skill set who could assist us with human resources duties, budgeting duties, research assignments, procurement, and some of the economic development duties now that the EDC has been reactivated. We looked to Farmington. Farmington is currently using this model. It's been working very successfully for them. It is a model often used in other parts of the country, and I'm looking forward to the opportunities that this will provide for the organization.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to approve the creation of the position classification of management specialist and the job description as presented? And further, is there a motion to approve an annual salary range for the management specialist position of $60,000 to $80,000 for a master's level or $50,000 to $70,000 for a bachelor's level, which may be amended from time to time through resolutions of the Board of Selectmen?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And Item H is the Summary of the Town Manager's Performance Review and Compensation. So on November 26th of last year, the Board of Selectmen conducted a mid-year performance review for the Town Manager. There's a summary in your packet, and at that time, we indicated that she was on track to fulfill a stipulation in her contract that allowed for a $2,500 raise for fulfilling certain economic development goals. At our last Personnel Subcommittee meeting, we endorsed that increase. Chris, thank you for taking the lead on pulling some of these items together. I just wanted to see if there's anything you wanted to add to...
No, I think you've summarized it well, right.
Okay. Is there a motion, February 25th, 2019, to accept the Town Manager's Performance Review summary and that effective summary, not effective, February 25th, 2019, per Section 5A of the Town Manager's Contract, that the Town Manager's base salary be increased by $2,500 from $152,500 to $155,000 in recognition that she's fulfilled mutually agreed-upon performance-related goals in connection with the development of an economic development strategic plan?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on now to Appointments and Resignations. The first, is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to reappoint the following individuals to Community for Care with the term expiring on December 2nd, 2019? Cheryl Cook, Chris Kelly, Nancy Sheets, Thomas Steen, Candace Brohinsky, Hannah Reynolds, Heather Muddano, Richard Holden, Sarah Gwynn, Karen Gallagher, Mark Lehman, Rebecca Rosenthal, and Sally Rieger.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. At our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen authorized Simsbury's participation in the Sustainable CT Program, and that resolution requires that a Sustainability Committee be established and tasked with supporting this initiative. Tonight, we won't be appointing the specific members of the team, but we will be designating the roles that we would be looking to fill on the committee. So staff consulted with the Clean Energy Task Force, and the following recommendations were made. So three members from the Clean Energy Task Force, one from the Planning Commission, one from the Recycling Committee, one from the Economic Development Commission, one from the Board of Education, and one from Culture, Parks, and Rec. Got that right? Okay, good. And I wanted to see from this group if there were any questions or any thoughts on that approach.
I like the approach. The only thing I'm wondering, will those boards or commissions be appointing the person? Or do we select from that group?
I think our thought process was to reach out to those committees or boards and have those boards select who they would be.
That was going to be my suggestion if that wasn't.
All right.
So that's great, because they should know internally who would be a good fit to do that. So I think that's great.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to formally create a Sustainability Team to support the Sustainable CT Certification Process, consisting of three members from the Clean Energy Task Force, one member of the Planning Commission, one member of the Recycling Committee, one member of the Economic Development Commission, one member of the Board of Education, and one member of the Culture, Parks, and Rec Commission? And, wait a minute, further move that the Clean Energy Task Force be tasked with supporting implementation projects that may arise following completion of the certification process?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, and that's where this list. Next, is there a motion to reappoint Janet Beatty as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term expiring January 1 of 2023, and Marvin Koff as a regular member of that committee with a term expiring January 1, 2023, and Diana Yaisli as a regular member with a term expiring January 1, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Is there a motion to appoint Stephen Antonio as a regular member of the Building Code Board of Appeals with a term expiring January 1 of 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion effective, is there a motion to appoint Grant Gritsmacher as a regular member of the Conservation Commission Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency with a term expiring January 1 of 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Chris got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint David Moore as a regular member of the Ethics Committee with a term expiring January 1 of 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that motion carries three to one. Is there a motion to appoint Michael Long as a regular member of the Police Commission with a term expiring January 1, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion to appoint Shannon Leary-Nall as a regular member of Aging and Disability with a term expiring January 1, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I am going to propose that we table the recommendation to Culture, Parks, and Rec because I would need to recuse myself, and then we won't have enough people to do the appointment. So we can do that at the next meeting. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think...
One more.
Oh.
No, one more.
Oh, yes.
Historic District Commission.
There we go. Is there a move? Oh, did I miss that?
Yes, Julie Carmichael.
Thank you for keeping me honest. If anyone's got it in front of you, just put the motion out there.
Is there a motion, what's that again?
Just make the motion.
Is there a motion to approve Julie Carmichael, excuse me, Ms. Carmelik, is my pronunciation name is, a regular member with term expiring January 1, 2024, vacating position as an alternate with this term expiring January 1, 2021, 2021?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that motion carries. We got all of those?
That's it.
Okay, excellent. And Item D, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Carol Miller as a member of the Recycling Committee, retroactive to February 20th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Finally, is there a motion effective February 25th, 2019, to appoint Joan Miller as a member of the Recycling Committee with a term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any feedback on the minutes from the February 11th meeting? Okay, then those stand. Are there any Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee reports? Anything under communication? Anything under communication, any of those items that anyone wanted to bring up for